You want to make a motion we open the meeting?
Second.
Move to second, all in favor? It's a vote. Carl?
Make a motion we approve the following warrants. Warrant thirty-five with an amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Warrant thirty-seven with an amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Warrant thirty-eight with an amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. And warrant thirty-nine with an amount of fifty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
So move in second to approves warrants thirty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. All in favor? That is a vote.
I will abstain.
You'll abstain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
All right, approval of our regular council minute, minute. Let me start over. Council meeting minutes from August twenty-sixth. Now let's see who was here. I need Carl, Acacia, Tim. So those are the three that can act on these ones.
No, Carl wasn't there.
No, no, Craig, oh yes, Craig, Acacia, and myself. We can approve that one if we get a motion.
All set for the August twenty-sixth one? Make a motion we approve the minutes from the August twenty-sixth meeting as written.
Second.
So move in second to approve our minutes from August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, all in favor? That's a vote. So up next is our September ninth. And who did we got at this meeting? Let's see. Myself, Steve Knowles, and Acacia.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the Monday, September ninth, two thousand nineteen council meeting.
Second.
So move in second to approve our minutes from our September ninth, two thousand nineteen, uh, meeting, all in favor? That's a vote. All right, and then up next is our minutes from October fifteenth. And... And let's see, myself, Steve, and Craig were here.
Make a motion we approve the minutes from the October fifteenth meeting as written.
Second.
Just move in second to approve our minutes from the October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen minute, uh, meeting, all in favor? That's a vote. All right. We're up. All right, Chris is gonna give us an update on the sewer project status.
Sewer project, despite what they put in their minutes, or, uh, or not their, uh, weekly update, they did not pave Summit Street last week, if you, as you're all probably aware. Uh, that should be occurring this week. And they say they're gonna be out of here by nowhere before.
That's like...
Anybody wanna put some money on table?
Well, they didn't say they were gonna be finished.
Oh.
You gotta, you gotta split yours here, yeah.
I like the sidewalk, the Long Street, by the way, they just like they stopped, like they got a phone call, they just stopped.
That was me and me.
Yeah.
Those are our wonderful payers.
And they've been told they probably won't be back.
What a shame, huh?
They were not, they were not, uh, sympathetic when we said, hey, there's still more work. Nope, we put out the exact time, times we bid on and we're gone.
If you'd like to pay us more money, uh, I won't tell you what I told them, but they won't be back.
And you're, and he's not supposed to tell them that, but he did.
I get things done.
Yes.
All right, so other than that on the sewer project, November fourth, they say they got it done, so this week, and, uh, this week they're supposed to pay. So they...
This is the last week.
They've, uh, put the base coat down on Maple Street.
Yep.
As of half hour ago. Tomorrow they're supposed to put the top coat on, they, and then they've gotta, see, they, they make twelve and a half millimeter, nine and a half millimeter hot top. Use twelve and a half for the base, nine and a half for the top. Obviously, we're not the only people they make hot top for right now. So they did the twelve and a half this morning, and I can't remember which way he said now, but I think it's, they're gonna do the nine and a half in the morning to put the second coat on Maple Street and get that done. And then they've gotta make nine and a half for other people, and then they're gonna change back over twelve and a half and start on Summit Street. That's the plan right now. Part of the issue with all this paving is all the state jobs are already in liquid damages. So Northeast is paying a fine every day that those jobs aren't done. So you can see what that does to our job, and it's just kind of, yeah, we'll get you, we'll get you, we'll get you.
Right, they're gonna get fined for us.
Exactly, exactly. But, um, I was, I was pretty adamant to them about the ridge had to have both coats on before Halloween. If they had any hopes at all of keeping any goodwill in this town, they better be ready for Halloween. That place is a, is a nightmare when you have all the roads in place, to have one lane up through there on Halloween night would be...
And we, we did bring that up to them at the last meeting. So hopefully that's, that's completed.
All right, so moving on to new business, Chris has a possible motion. Paper Talks Magazine is looking to, for us to run an ad. Is everyone familiar with Paper Talks Magazine?
Yeah.
He's from, is it Ellsworth?
Uh, Jonesboro.
Oh, yes, originally from Jonesboro, I don't know if you guys hear him out of the...
Well, actually, he lives there, but the printing's done, I believe, in Ellsworth.
What would our ad say?
It's just a, just, look at the bottom, there's copies right there. It's not very much, two hundred and thirty-two bucks. However, it's usually good press for some, you know, what they do is pick some local people, get their photo pictures, some they have a story on.
There's only four copies, she doesn't want to share.
Yeah. This is it, right here, just this little bit?
Yeah, that would be it. Well, it doesn't say we have good G A or anything like that on it, does it?
So what's the intent here?
Well, this is the Paper Talks Magazine.
Right.
As you can see on the back page here, that's two hundred and thirty-two.
Holy smokes.
Right.
Exactly.
So this is gonna do what for Baileyville?
It's just advertising in there if we wanna advertise. They usually pick some local athletes and some local people to do stories on in the magazine.
Our Sophie sponsor, then they'll come up, potentially new stories.
We just had our picture taken for the issue mag.
Well, yeah, I mean, those are just printed, they're free to anyone.
Okay, so if we don't do this, they're just gonna avoid us?
They'll, they'll, they'll come back next year and probably ask again too.
But meanwhile, they're not gonna do any stories on this?
They won't do any on the town, but that's, their intent usually is they'll pick like an athlete that graduated maybe ten, twenty years ago. They might pick, you know, they might put in some photographs of the nineteen, you know, seventy-six, uh, basketball team or whatever, things like that.
So if we do the ad, are we guaranteed to get some kind of write-up?
No, but if you look at the magazine itself, you'll see that, um, they pick a year, like Chris said, and usually every high school had something going on in there, and then there's a, a story regarding it, it's...
Yeah, whether we put it, put the ad in or not, there, there will probably be a story with someone familiar.
Make a motion we, they have a council, a town council approve the purchase of an ad in the Paper Talks Magazine for two hundred and thirty-two dollars. They fell on deaf ears and I'm gonna do it.
Any seconds out there?
Is this something that we should be doing, is...
I, I would've thought that you've probably been approached in the past, but...
We have not, if, if it was brought to us, it was never brought, uh, in front of us.
Yeah, it's the first time since I've done it. I just, I, I, I guess I just don't know what the...
You don't get a whole lot of banking freebie.
I mean, we're a business, we're a business, but I don't know.
I will say most of the stories generally focus Machias, he's Machias, Jones, what, Jonesboro.
Chalice.
Well, like one year they did Tony Tamrow, like that would've made sense to do an ad. If they're doing something specific to Baileyville...
That one's, that one was two pages, just of wild land, so that one's...
There's, they, over the years, there's been quite a few, besides they've done spread balls back in the day, they've done a lot of things on the pavement. There's been some interesting articles over the years.
Have we ever purchased ads in the past?
No. Might be something we can budget for next year if that's something we are interested in.
So, got a motion out there, hearing a no, Carl, are you a no? Acacia, are you a no?
Nothing different.
No, all right, so. It's been defeated. All right, so, let's see. Next is sewer abatement.
There's just one, I couldn't ask if this is another one or else. I, I put it, I put it in the packet.
Okay, that's okay. All right, we have a sewer abatement, um, for account two seventy, Joanna Bailey, in the amount of twenty-nine dollars. There was an input error in the town's part.
Make a motion we approve the sewer... Abatement, no abatement, for twenty-nine dollars for account two seventy.
Second.
So move in second to abate account two seventy in the amount of twenty-nine dollars for an input error by the town. All in favor? It's a vote. Standing or down? Okay, Chris, you're on the docket.
All right, down the Spudman Utility, we have our, um, ribbon cutting here on Friday. Uh, Olivia Snow's office sent a fancy letter for the town. If anyone would like to take one of that, that's there. Uh, we have our first customers on board. We're still hoping that more addresses get released fairly soon. I think in your packet you also have a listing, yes you do, a listing of, uh, various phases. We completed one and two completely. Number three, they're, they're testing right now, once that's done, three will be released also, and that should be in the next few days. I think they've, between Baileyville and Chalice, the first ten customers are connected.
Oh, are connected.
Are connected. Jamie Bohannon was the first one connected, period. So he is on it, and if, if he likes it, he gets that everyone's gonna hear about that. Marion Moore was one of the first in Chalice. So you're seeing people starting to be connected. We had a lot of good turnout, we had, um, Marion Moore was there, we had representatives from Olivia Snow's office, we had, or not Olivia Snow, Susan Collins' office, uh, Angus King's office. We had folks, uh, well, Jared Gold was here, he was not in Chalice, but he came here for the, uh, cutting. We had, um, I wanna say we had two people from King's office.
Anne Perry was here, Anne Perry was here.
Anne Perry was here, yeah. Yeah, when I say Marion Moore, it was Anne Perry, it was not Marion Moore. But, uh, it was well attended, we had, I had to put, uh, toll more chairs into this room. And, I mean, we, we packed many, there were two or three people standing in the hallway. So it was well attended. They brought in a line here, and, you know, temporarily to just show it and then spliced it together to show how that works. Got some real good speed out of, uh, some places in Maine, and when they started going to Canada, you know, upload speed was as high as nine, nine ninety on upload. And, but, uh, there was something kind of strange with the Canadian signal coming in for download, but they were only getting like seven eighty, eight hundred and twenty, but normally that would be up near, um, up near a thousand. So, I mean, it was, it was pretty impressive with the speed. Chalice, I went down and tended that one too, and that went well. They, uh, they, theirs was probably not quite as well attended, but still, uh, a good crowd there. And, um, everyone's starting to get hyped about this. Danny Sullivan was, uh, did a speech at each place and did well with that. And he, and he kept pushing Jared Golden to, don't give money to private companies trying to do this stuff, give it to towns first, let the town decide where the money goes, not the private, let the private company decide how they wanna give it to the town. Looking at, we've been doing interviews for the, uh, the person who eventually is, is gonna move into Karen's job. We've done, I believe, nine so far, and probably have three or four more to go, uh, or three more to go, I would say. The other thing I'm looking at is with that, to, we're gonna need some more space to put a second person in Karen's office. And what I'm looking at, um, is to take the front half of the fire department office, which would then make, um, Karen's office L-shaped, with the counter being sort of like the, the middle of the L. Shift the door in the fire department office back about ten, twelve feet, and take the back half of the bathroom, take out the second shower and one urinal, shift the, the other shower, and create, you know, the, give the fire department back the space that we, we steal from them.
Well, help me out here. Why would we have to do that?
Well, we'd be taking what's, what space he does have for, for storage.
No, no, I understand that, but we use, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a, a third person here.
We had two desks in my office at one point.
Right, but, I mean, we did have two people that worked in that office. Right? So I'm not quite sure...
Well, who, who, well, Charlotte's at, no...
No, Nancy Simpson was here.
No, no, this is prior to you, I mean, she worked...
Did you have a desk there?
Karen, um, Karen Bell was here for a long time.
I, I don't know what she had, did she have a desk, or did she just have the counter?
Just had the counter.
Had the counter. I mean, I get what we're trying to do, but I don't know if we just wanna go that quite that crazy, just jail.
Well, we can put it in my office, like I said, we had two desks in there before.
Well, that's where, realistically, that's where everybody used to be prior to that.
Yeah, right.
So, well, let's, let's regroup on that and figure out what the best way is.
Okay. We had a, uh, roof leak, uh, the last storm, it was minor, and then today it was quite heavy, back end of the kitchen that huddled up against the chimney for the building. And there were, so, uh, we were able to get Craig's brother up there with his group, and they found a gap along the, you know, the upside of the chimney, and, um, were able to fill that. But we also, the, um, the masonry at the top is all cracked and, and chunks sitting on, just sitting on the top of the chimney, so, uh, he's gonna go up there and he's got some masonry, he's gonna finish that off before we're gonna take care of it.
How's the rest of the chimney look?
Um, not great, but not too bad.
So will this be like, it's good, gonna be good for like this year, next year?
It'll prob, I would say it's probably good for, for several years, but I would guess that it's a cinder block chimney instead of brick, so at some point you might wanna replace that, or at some point might wanna go with just a, uh...
Metal bastis?
Yeah, metal bastis coming up through. But, uh, it's, it's interesting how this, when we first noticed any issue with it, this is when they were servicing the boilers a couple weeks ago, it's the heat, a lot of water's coming down through the chimney. Now, the last storm last week, we noticed the drip on the back end of the kitchen, and then this morning it was coming in pretty steady.
So you're gonna get that at least temporary fixed?
Yeah, he's already got the, the, the drip should be fixed, but now we, we're gonna temporary, we get the, the upper part of the chimney, uh, done up. We have elections coming, uh, I believe before our next meeting, if you're on there. Yes, the, um, the eleventh is the next, well, the eleventh is scheduled the next meeting, so it would be the twelfth. Today's election day, was it the... Yes, yeah. We're looking at, um, election day before that. I believe there's only one question, two questions on that right now, on the referendum. One, I think, is the vaccine question, and what's the other one?
The, um, availability for anybody to be able to vote. Is it availability or whatever, which I thought we had that in the...
So...
You skipped the, the on six B.
Oh, correct, uh, direct, uh, yes, we're gonna, we, we're pushing everyone to do that, uh, you brought papers up for you guys, so...
Well, a couple of them, they took them home tonight, so...
Right, and we're hitting the, the part-time police officers also, so we're gonna have those in this week. Take care of that finally. And hopefully run a test. What's your next vehicle, uh, registration tip?
Test month.
Good. Come in, come in and see Karen and do it online. You're, you're the test, you're the test money.
Oh, come in here and do it online.
Yes. That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing to, to validate it and get it going, so bring her credit card and we'll get her done.
Is that everything?
That is it.
What were you saying on before the election, what, on the sixth, and you were saying about the election day the fifth, was there something on the sixth?
Oh, it's, I, no.
Oh, okay.
Sewer, uh...
So the, the elections being before our next meeting?
Well, we have sewer meeting on the, on the sixth. Um, county, I have county budget meeting tomorrow morning at nine, and hopefully that's one of the last ones. Right now there are not that many problems with the county budget people coming up, not like last year where they slapped three new officers on. Things seem to be working out pretty good.
They also have a surplus of money that they're using to offset.
Exactly, they're using a lot of money that they raised last year to offset next year's budget.
Right, so it's a trickle-down effect, kicking sand down the road so we can get it next year.
Yeah, and I think you're gonna find that that's their new tactic. I will say this, it's very difficult for the county budget people, the county finance people to anticipate what is gonna be asked next, because we'll say, okay, we want it this way, and then at the next meeting when we, they give it to us that way, you say, okay, and we'd also like it this way, and we get it that way, and they say, and we'd like it this way. So it's, they're trying to jump through hoops for us. I'm hoping that we don't have to, I, yeah, you're right in that they're kicking it down the road, the question is how long can they manage to do that?
Well, you don't have to look too far, just ask Baileyville, we tried it for a few years and it didn't work so well for us.
Well, you, you went through your surplus pretty quick.
We did.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal, is to build that back up.
Speaking of that, the auditors are here tomorrow.
We are, um, we put up a fair number of signs, well, we, Public Works put up a, a bunch of signs.
Excellent, very good too. One truck driver got to see one up close and personal. I had one sign done and I was walking across the avenue and they turned while I was standing in the road. So I literally was kinda like, I said, where are you going? He said, the mill. I said, you're not going this way. He said, I always go this way. I said, not anymore. He said, well, I can go First Avenue. I said, ooh, no, access road, I'll help you back, back out on Route One. He didn't wave or thank me or anything, but...
Those signs...
While we, that was on Second Avenue, as we were traveling to put the ones on Third Avenue, a truck went by and turned in front of me, he didn't hear what I hollered to him, but, um, but I did, um, Friday, I was talking to Travis out in front of T-Buck's office out here, and I did see one truck slow down with his blinker on, and then shut his blinker off and keep on going.
Is that because of the sign or because he saw you?
I'm gonna say the sign, but I had noticed almost on all the curbing that within the last few days, they've all drove up over the curbs and on the lawns and stuff, so we're not stopping all of them by any stretch, but we did stop one.
They are more noticeable than the small signs with the tissue. Yeah, I, I never knew that those, um, the access route signs were even up until, so they mentioned it, so I had to go looking for them and...
Yeah.
Rarely look for them.
Yeah, yeah, you really did, yeah.
Yeah, when I got past those, put up, I...
Well, it sounds like if, if he said he's using the best road he uses, then maybe we have a different problem than we thought. We thought it was the people, new people coming in that didn't know...
This was BSP delivery. I mean, it was a Caucasian American, English-speaking gentleman that's riding in here, kind of times.
We've got a different problem than...
Those are your regular, your storms.
Going to the stolen.
Exactly.
There are only three exceptions that we're, that we're pretty much letting through. There are people who are doing Mainway, people doing Linda's Pizza, people doing the electric supply.
Well, those are three we're not cursing at, because we're not doing anything else, I mean, we're not, the police aren't stopping them, uh, they're not getting any tickets, we're not doing anything but watching them, other than putting some signs up.
Do we have, do we have to, do we have an ordinance?
We do not, we can, we can draft one.
We can't, the police just can't...
Right, we can't enforce them, we can just...
Right, for going down one of our streets, but if we had an ordinance...
An ordinance is good.
Can we, can we look into getting an ordinance so that there's some teeth behind this, because...
At least, uh, it would be nice to inconvenience them, that maybe if the police stopped them and just told them that they're trying to keep vehicles off of these streets, you know, with, they're not made for this, and just take up a few minutes of the time. Most people don't wanna be stopped by the police, even if they're not doing anything wrong, so who knows what else they might think of.
He gets a fair number every week. His blood level, his, his blood pressure level goes like this during the day when he stops trucks. He, he is, I have to say, he is very attentive to that.
Could, do we need a motion for that to happen?
I can draft an ordinance for you and then read it.
Then he'll bring it in and then we'll pick it apart, and then they'll have to go through his three reading.
And it's, the beauty of that is that's one of the ordinances specifically by main statute, councils can do on their own, right?
The only other thing that I can see the mill doing is making their delivery address like the access road, the scale house, rather than Main Street, and that way there, the fighting chances, you got them to the access.
I brought that up to Scott, um, twice, once last week, and one, uh, twice last week, once, um, Tuesday, and once on Friday.
I think a mile out is kind of right in the gully of, uh, Washva Hagan. It's a mile, I put a sign, measured it off, and one of the signs I had received was one mile to the mill or whatever, it's literally this size. It'd be nice if somebody could get, you know, the mill, call the state, the O T, and have them make a sign and have something actually say, if you got that close to in-town and it said a mile out, you would know that these size streets was too close.
Well, what about one of those blue signs, 'cause I know...
That's what I mean, something, something of that, right.
I tell you what, Chris, those are twelve by eighteens, if you could have like a twenty-four by thirty-six, or, you know, you're basically, you're basically, uh, quadrupling the size of a sign.
Uh, it's down on a state highway.
That's the thing, and we can, we can see what the state will allow us to put up too.
It just said something like, all deliveries going to the mill, use the access roads.
The other thing that we can do even before we get the ordinance done, underneath those signs that you put up, you know, put a little add-on sign, fines began at, blankety-blank.
Minimum fine.
Five hundred dollars.
Minimum fine, such as...
About five hundred. Five hundred might be a little high, and, and a little, you might...
What about if you did fifty dollars, I don't know.
They're, they're probably still gonna get a warning if they can stop the five hundred dollars.
Or, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars on first fine, going, you know, might get their attention a little bit, but something that you can put underneath, they have no charge.
It's just tough, 'cause I, I don't like to have too many signs out on avenues, because it's hard for people to see down the road. It's actually worse for us in the cloud truck, because we're sitting higher, but it, 'cause you need them out far enough so the trucks can see them before they make a turn, but you want them back in far enough so that they're not walking.
Well, the ones you put on the stop signs made the most sense.
Exactly, and it's just the idea of, you'll see one avenue, I've got them kind of this way, and the other avenues are kind of out this way, I just wanna make sure you can see it from both directions, even though probably ninety-five percent of our issues are coming this way. I just wanna make sure you can see it from both directions, even though probably ninety-five percent of our issues are coming this way.
Right.
But we want to get two on there, and there is two on the, on the two telephone poles on either side of, this side of the mill gate. That you can easily see from where they pull out to the access road, you can see both from on the telephone poles.
Is that all you have? All right, public comments, Marilyn, Jamie?
Just real quick, um, some of the, our bigger projects, that's where, kind of where they're standing, we've got the salt stand up, we're ready to rock and roll there. We've got two, both of our newer trucks are all outfitted, ready to, ready to go. They're coming tomorrow to do the cemetery fence, start and finish the cemetery fence, that was Never Forgotten. Just Daleville waiting on the list like always. And the plan right now is to finish the sidewalks Wednesday. Finish Palm Street, finish Broadway. I'm not quite sure how, after the other conversations I've had in regards to the streets and all that, but I was literally called and told doing it Wednesday. So, I think that's all we had left for big stuff. I say it's took me all year to get most of it done, but people don't like to come this far down Route nine. No matter how much you pay.
John? How's that, Mike?
Just getting ready for Halloween.
Getting ready. Excellent, all right, councilor closing comments, Carl? Craig, nothing?
Steve? That recognition thing, uh, we need to, we really need to get some.
Get some names on there?
Names on there. Um, I saw, I think it was the Calis advertiser, uh, we had a business in town for fifty years, Mohan has got recognized. Is that just for people or can we recognize businesses as well, or?
I think the intent behind it was people, but I think we can be recognized for anything we want, considering probably the last time it was updated was what?
Tony.
Tony, in what year of?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three.
These are all for days, Paul Phelan Day, Henry Noonan Day, Tony Tamro Day. Do you have to be gone to get on that list?
That's a good question.
That's a fair question.
I don't wanna be on the list right now.
But you're right, Steve, I mean, you know, we should be doing something with the.
At least recognize some of our, our people that are like.
And there's been plenty of people that have passed away that deserve recognition.
And would we, would we have to do it for this year, or could we say?
You could do, go back.
You know what I mean? Go back.
In some of those years.
With sixteen people.
Well, some of those people.
Well, I don't, I don't.
Some of those people that passed in, in the year that they passed, we'd easily say.
Well, they're all in the town.
Town report.
Town report, so.
You could look in, in the last sixteen years and bring out the names and can add it and. I mean, because, I mean, those three men that were named, I mean, that's great things, but. There are other people that have been residents that have done same, same or or more.
And then the thing is, you know, would you necessarily have to have someone each year?
Well, we could, I mean, I mean.
That's, that's putting a, a day for each of them.
Well.
So I would assume that you'd wanna do like a proclamation.
Chris knows what building I want.
Name that to me.
Which is it?
The vault. All kinds of room there, it's black.
Is that everything?
Uh, no, it was, uh, how, how are we coming along with names for the, the field and the, um, the courts that we heard anything?
I mean, I've got a couple in my mind.
Okay, what do you have for?
Well, I think, I think the Main Street complex down here, because it's pickleball, basketball, so. The Fourth Avenue, just call it after that, the Junction, whatever you courts, whatever you wanna call that. But I, I think that the, I like the spending field, I think we should call it the Council Field.
Do we need to vote on it, or should we put it on our next agenda, our next agenda, so that we can do a vote just in case anybody wants to talk about it?
Well, we could put it on for our next agenda and if some other names pop up and we can. And Mike, maybe you can chime in and come up with some names that make sense, you know more of the history. You know, why Main Street was put together like that and Fourth Avenue and things like that, I mean. I know there's history behind all these and how the Junction Court, you know, came about. Other than a vacant lot, you know.
Along with that, uh, I know we have Glidden Field and Tamro Field, do those signs need to be updated? I mean, like, everything's. Yeah, refurbished, I mean, cause we got nice feds in, we got nice.
Actually, the Tamro Field one's not even there anymore.
Yeah, they, they, all those come down because of the new fence, so we're not, cause even the banners, but, um.
Should we look into getting a new, new, a new big sign?
Mike, is, is the Tamro one in good condition or does that need to be?
It, it's been there for quite a few years, it could be updated.
And the Glidden Field one definitely would need to be re, re done.
So I don't know whether we wanna do that now, or just, just so that we have signs for all of our.
Well, yeah.
Have them ready for the.
Have these, get them ready for the spread.
Or, yeah, or put them up now, whatever, you know, I mean, you guys know what you're doing.
But, yeah, the, uh.
Now, you're looking at wooden signs, metal signs, what are you looking at?
Probably metal and vinyl.
I'd like to see something that's gonna last, something that looks nice and is gonna last.
So many people doing the vinyl and stuff now, it does seem to last well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Something that's gonna last, something that's gonna stay nice and look nice and. Probably not particle board.
No, but, you know, you, metal sign with, with vinyl letters on it.
Yeah, that would look, that would look sharp.
Probably looked the sharpest, you know, in last one.
That's what we put on the electronic sign at the high school. I got that from, um, Tim down at Cabin Beaver, and that sign, I mean, looks, looks just like what we got it.
How long ago?
It's been five years, five years that we've had the electronic sign up on.
Been a while. First Avenue, um, I know we've closed, or we've abandoned part of that road. I don't expect you guys to do anything right now, but like during soccer season, three o'clock, man, there are people piling out of there. And that's where we have, that's where people park for soccer games, there's kids, and if there's anything we can do. Thinking ahead for next year, for soccer season to go over, but somehow get that road blocked off or something, just so that people can park and.
I think the mill would work with you on that.
And just, you know, just so that we don't use, may- maybe just for soccer season, so from. September, oh yeah, baseball, I forgot about that.
But it's just on the specific days that you're having games there or something going on in the context.
For, you know, determine that, that, you know, whatever, I don't, gotta be, gotta be something we can.
Well, the, the, the good news, well, hopefully good news is that next year will be the end of the sewer project. I mean, you will have that stuff down there, but the mill tends to, anytime they have a shutdown, that's where they wanna.
Well, what's Steve's, I don't think Steve's necessarily thinking of the party, I think he's thinking more of the workers getting out at three and going up.
Probably three quarters of the traffic that come out of that mill at three o'clock still use First Avenue.
First Avenue, yeah, I, I agree with that.
There's a lot now going on, Spruce Street coming down by my place.
There's a lot, but I mean, if, if you could work with the mill on days that you had games going on there. To just have the barricades there that force them to build a second.
Are you concerned even with practices?
Yeah, I just, it's not, I, I would not want one of our students to be run over because somebody tearing up trying to get home.
And, and that's kinda where I was leading to, I mean, with practices and games, it's almost every night, right? While the season's going on, so from September through October, you could detour.
And from May to June, you could detour.
And, yeah, as long as our kids are safe, that's, that's great.
Well, in baseball, actually, it'd be less likely because the, the only big deal there in soccer is that the ball's going over the fence and kids having to go and get them. Um, whereas in baseball, we don't, we don't put many balls over that fence.
Play a poke.
Yeah, I mean, you.
But I mean, we have people, we have people parked up against the fence.
Which they shouldn't be.
Which is fine, I mean, I don't care, they park there, but then, you know, you got kids, cause there's other kids messing around, you know, it's just.
It's gonna be a young kid that's gonna.
Young kid that runs out, runs out, gets run.
And I notice further down the fence, of course, that hill starts to take its back. And when they're up in that, if you look, there's traffic down there, the minor traffic comes right up into the road.
That's right, yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's, ain't that much room to get by.
That's right.
If you just blocked off the end of Mill Street there.
Well, Spruce Street is what you're gonna block off.
Well, and, and, and blocked off, um, the First Ave, you know, on the other side of the, the intersection. You still left the, you still left it so people could go down First Ave and then onto, you know.
On the mill?
Well, ideally.
Behind the field and then still go out on.
Yeah, but, but it's just as easy for them to, because that parking lot is closer to First Avenue than it is Second Ave, or closer to Second Avenue. Than it is First, so if you block Spruce off and force them to take Second to Route one, would make the most sense.
We, and on that same topic, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions of what we're gonna do with Spruce Street, I, you know, we, we put things off. Looking to the future, and there's just, there's not much left of that road, I mean, it's getting, I, I didn't touch it with a sweeper this year. Because I would've sucked up the whole road and it's bad enough, you know, hot, I, I'm sorry, not hot topping, plowing it. My guy has a heck of a time trying to plow it and, and it's getting to the point now where we're literally gonna be ripping the road up if we have the warm spells in the winter time. So we're gonna have to kind of figure out something, whether we're just gonna spend the money and, and at least get an overlay on it. Maybe a thinner overlay or just something to get us by for how many ever years, or if something changes that we'll just take that as a loss. There is houses on there, you know, I try to treat everybody the same no matter where they live and I'd like to do something at some point.
But if you could just block off anything that way and that way, just allow it.
Yeah, but, I mean, John's right, if you keep, keep driving down, I mean, the road is.
Well, no, make it so they can't, they can't go, the only way they could, if they're between, say, where, uh, Spruce Street coming out of Palm. That they can only go around, around the field, anything coming from the mill would be blocked off.
No, block that exit and force them up the other.
If you, and I, here's Spruce Street. And here's the parking lot right here, okay? And here's First Avenue, and here's Second Avenue. If you just blocked it right here. They, they would have to come to Second Avenue.
Exactly, that's what I.
And don't force them down to Palm or anything.
No, 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 just force it.
Force them to go this way instead of.
That's right.
Block, block the road there, and, and you have people who stay stuff here, but basically.
Well, no, this is, this would be Mill Street right here, and Mill Street really isn't your issue.
No.
Because you could actually block Mill Street off right there by the Mainway where it comes out, and they couldn't do anything. But that parking lot doesn't come through to here.
Exactly. But it would just have to be, I think, probably something movable, because you still gotta plow it now.
Yep.
Well, yeah, just be the temptation, be the.
I mean, if we talk, if we talk to the mill, do you think maybe they would just block that exit? And we don't have to worry about blocking any streets or whatever, they just block that exit so everyone on the side knows they just cut off the other.
Would be a mental open it.
I mean.
What, why, I, I think we've had this conversation, I just don't remember, why are we leaving it open at all?
Yeah, mine, mine should be shut and that.
That, that section that we actually took the hot top up.
Yeah.
Why are we keeping that open?
I thought it was because the mill wanted to continue to use it.
Are we compiling or are we talking Spruce?
Lower First Ave, where they're coming up off of Spruce onto First Avenue. Right, we discontinued that section of, of street and we had ripped up the hot top on that section of street. And the mill's about kind of maintaining it, cause I'm not going to, so they've come down there and they, they kind of keep back dragging with the loader. So that section there, there's no hot top, we discontinued that two years ago.
Right, but, but Spruce Street on the east side. Or the south side, that, that was another entrance for them to get out, you know what I'm saying?
Well, they can still go either direction of Spruce Street right now, and meaning Second Avenue or Palm Street. And that section of First Avenue, we dug that up and, and, but still, that's the, the way the traffic goes, that's what you're concerned with, right? From them coming up from Spruce Street on that dirt section of, of First Avenue up over the hill, that's what he's concerned about. We discontinued that, but we do still, I mean, everybody's kept using it, so we do plow it and, and, uh.
Why not take a line of blocks or concrete pieces and go across Spruce this way and across First that way? But you still can go first to Spruce behind the field for people doing that.
You mean off Mill Street?
Everything, well, no, um, block off Spruce towards Mill. Then block off First beyond Spruce.
On the riverside.
Right, so that traffic can go around the field, but can't come up, uh, First or come up. Um, that piece of Spruce that goes up to, towards the Mill.
I think.
I think you're better off just blocking off First.
Yeah.
Because that, you don't wanna make the mill only have one exit. You really wanna be able to have them to go two different directions.
You know where that fire extinguish, uh, fire hydrant is, like.
On the inside corner, right?
Inside of that, like where that big out the door, how the house is, like, if we just lock that off, that would be like, it wouldn't be able to come up there. You know, that would just, they'd still be able to use Mill and Spruce and.
Cause if we blocked it off, right where I took the hot top out, right where you made the, the left-hand corner on the Mill. You blocked that off and then blocked it off on the upper, this side of Spruce Street going across. Then we're just blocking off the road that we discontinued, that's no longer a road.
But, but you'd still have the three o'clock bill traffic that could come out of there.
Now, there's a rock right there, they could go down to Palm Street.
Yeah.
And come out, but they would never be able to go up First Avenue.
Their choice is either Palm or Second.
Yeah.
Or wiggle their way out through their Mainway.
Okay, does that make sense, Tim?
You're talking putting them on the west side.
Top and bottom, top and bottom of the section that we ripped out.
So how do you plow that then? Why would you plow that?
Well, you start plowing it.
You're not gonna plow that little section that's still tight?
Well, I can still make the corner onto Mill Street, cause it stops right where Mill Street is, that stops right there, so that's almost like a nine-degree turn. And then Spruce Street just goes straight down through, the rest of it, there's no hot top.
How many weeks would you think about putting and how, um, easily would it be able to move them for the winter so you could plow?
Well, if, if you wanna block it off and just make it a permanent thing, just block it off and then we just never plow it again. That way, that way, all, you'd have to put a sign so that people.
Oh, so, so, so I'm hearing you correctly, then Spruce Street on the lower end would only have one exit to Palm Street.
Or up, all the way up through Second Avenue.
Okay, but, all right, now, I, I know what you're saying, but the, why are we keeping track of Spruce Street on the upper end?
This is all, this is all Spruce Street here, the field's here. This is Mill Street, all I wanna do is block it off here and here. The dirt, that's all dirt now.
Right.
So anything on Spruce Street can still go up Palm Street or go up Second Avenue.
Right, but this street right here, why do we keep care of that?
That's still a street, that's still a town street.
I know, but why do we keep, why do we keep it?
Because, I mean, the mill parking lots, like, the mills on one side, the parking lot on the other, but that is a good point.
They own, they own.
Yeah, well, up until just recently.
Right, because the hars, the hars, but they own it now.
Yes, they do.
So why wouldn't we just discontinue that right there?
I'm just gonna give you that piece of.
And then on the motion for next meeting.
And then keep your dirt hard or whatever you wanted to do, but so you could get on to Spruce Street, so when somebody's coming through Street North. They can turn onto First Avenue.
But then that defeats whole purpose of keeping it safe for the kids.
They'd have to turn.
Well, no, the mill, I'm talking about, say you were coming from John's house, they could come up that way and get on to First Avenue.
They'd have to directly.
But the mill couldn't go that way. But the mill couldn't go that way.
So just block off, upper Spruce, uh, Spruce Street at that intersection.
At that intersection of where First Avenue.
Cause you're, the only bad part is then they've only got one way out of, out of those parking lots. Or like they can do what they're doing now and drive through the yards over like almost straight across the mainway, they're gonna get a path through there and stop.
Right. But then if that becomes the issue, then we could block off Mill Street. Because they own everything on that side of the road except for Tryonie's Trail.
Do we, do we plow down in there?
We'd do Mill Street yesterday.
I, it, it would be, we'd have to figure out what we'd do as far as plowing Second Avenue, lower Second Avenue, where would we stop, where would we put the snow, kinda deal. Because it'd almost be like a dead end, but everything would be open, so there's some place that we'd have a truckload of snow that every time we made a pass and we'd have to back out.
Or one of those lots where you have to put it in and turn around like.
The mill owns the backside of high school field.
It's like.
I knew that.
Yeah.
The, and then backside of the field?
High school field, uh, down below the thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, more than a yard.
Let's just.
Backside of the.
I think you guys can put together something that will make sense, that will cure a lot of issues, one, being the safety and two, what makes sense for your plowing purposes. All right, any?
Maybe we'll set that next meeting, maybe have a motion after we hear.
Sorry to drag that on for you.
And then the decision, based on what Jamie says too, so we can get that underway before the snow.
If you can have that conversation with Scott and you and Jamie can have a conversation on what makes the most sense, so. Anything else, Steve?
No.
No?
Acacia?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right, I just got a couple of things, you've answered one, the sidewalks, court names you brought up, um, the website.
Yeah, I will have that up in November, that has been on me, I've been dragging my feet, cause I gotta get more pictures and a little more information to her so she can get that up and running. But we wanna get that online in November and that would move us from one person to another, but that should, it will be November and hopefully it will roll out very nicely.
Right. Um, the one thing, um, and it kinda goes back to this motion on the paper talks ad. Um, I was approached and Mike, I don't know if you're aware, there's a travel, big basketball team for girls or something going on. Um, they're trying to put together a sponsorships for, um, to help offset the cost of this league, um, what's it called, Elite something or something anyway. But I would like to see us, um, budget monies, maybe in the categorical account, for things that crop up like this. And, you know, cause this, we may or may not think it's a good cause, but we at least have the money budgeted so that we can spend that without it having to, uh, you know. Specifically, you know, if we said, yeah, we wanna sponsor this travel team, well, that's not fair to Mike, cause Mike never budgeted even though it's a sport. So we'd like to, could say Mike's gonna sponsor, well, I think it makes sense for the council to have that money aside, so it's not affecting whether it's Mike or John's or Police Department or Jamie's budget. You know, and I don't know what that number is, but, I mean, as you can see, two hundred and thirty-two dollars for an ad, you know. I think if we put five hundred dollars aside a year, it gives us some opportunity that doesn't affect the budgets of the department heads. So. That make sense? And that's all, yeah?
I did, I did actually have something, I called this morning, we got the voicemail for the county office.
It still says Rick Bronson.
Yeah, he hasn't been here for a while, so.
Can't, can't, we, we can't figure out how to get into it, Paul, Paul can't do it and we, we may have to take down the entire system.
Why can't Paul do it?
Because it, Rick had a password.
Can I not call Rick and find his password?
Well, he, he's trying to remember it.
Well, who put this system in?
You know, forgot your password.
Was it all TT?
You get them, get it sent to them.
Why, could we call them, maybe there's a way to.
To change passwords?
Well, to bypass that.
Hey, it's just one of those things, like.
It's driving.
Like not updating the website, you know, it's just one of those things, just get rid of it if we're not gonna update it.
There's another, there's another thing on, on the, um.
Well, I hate calling it, oh yeah, I'll leave a message for Rick, now I'm trying to get all the rest.
Well, there's, the, the other, the other thing is because the, the, um, town manager at Baileyville.org. If you click on it, on, on my computer, it says, "Rick Bronson." On my computer, you know, when I click on it, it says Chris Lachlan, but in certain times you click on it and it says, "Rick Bronson," and, and I'm, you know. I had Danny Sullivan sit down one day to try and get, figure out what's going wrong. It's got some interesting things going on. But, yeah, I will try to get that password changed, it's, it's driving me crazy.
Yeah.
Hey, is that everything? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Moving second to adjourn all in favor, the vote, great, thank you.